All right, we'd like to call this meeting to order tonight and glad to see everybody here. Can we have the roll call, Tabitha?
Sure. Mayor Young is absent this evening, so Vice Mayor Ovechkin.
Here.
Commissioner Tucker.
Here.
Commissioner Schurkenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
So with that, we'll have the invocation, Pastor Mark Summerville. Good to see you tonight.
Show our praise. Our gracious Father, again tonight, we come to you seeking your wisdom and your guidance tonight at this city commission meeting, and we need your directions to help us make good decisions for this city. We pray for our country tonight as we are now at a dilemma tonight, and we just pray that your will will be done in this matter. Guide us tonight, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. You all stand for the pleasurable legion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a proclamation to read tonight, World Polio Day proclamation. And get ready, it is along with it. Okay. Proclamation, the city of El Dorado, Kansas. Whereas Rotary International, founded on February the 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, USA is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations. And whereas Rotary is a global network consisting of over 1.4 million members in more than 46,000 clubs in 221 countries and geographical areas who unite as neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers to take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary, in 1985, launched Polio Plus; in 1988, helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance, to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than 2.6 billion in countless volunteer hours protecting nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which will be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed support, medical staff laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to the effort. And whereas the Rotary Club of El Dorado, Kansas, sponsors service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in our local community and abroad. And whereas El Dorado Rotarians have committed their time, talent, and treasure to continue to support Polio Plus until polio is finally eradicated from the earth. Now therefore, I, Leon Leachman, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Vice Mayor of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to hereby proclaim October 24, 2024, as World Polio Day. In the city of El Dorado, Kansas, and urge all citizens to pay special attention during that week to our federal constitution and the advantage of American citizenship. In witness thereof, I have here to force set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to be effect fixed on the 21st day of October 2024. The one thing I would like to say, some of us people who are a little older around here remember seeing the iron lungs and seeing things like that, which you just don't find those anymore, and I'm sure happy to be able to say that. So, anything else we need to do on that, young lady? Okay. So I guess we'll move on to personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Emerald Ashlock at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 p.m. the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only. No action will be taken, and it seems that the first one online is the El Dorado Inc. Quarterly Report. Thank you for coming, young lady.
Thank you. Well, good evening. I can't believe I'm back with another economic development update. It's already quarter three of 2024. So over the past three months, I have responded to 10 different project requests for proposals from multiple sources, state and regional. I saw a balance between projects looking for a ready-to-go building and projects looking for large amounts of acreage and big power and water requirements. The types of projects ranged from manufacturing and warehousing to advanced technology, and we did actually see one in aircraft this time. This past quarter, I did see more requests for buildings that are ready to go than I have in quite a while, which to me shows that companies are really looking for that speed to market more than ever. I have been submitting the Pioneer Balloon Building, which is listed with NAI Martin for lease. And then just of note, the region as a whole has seen a slowdown this month on projects due to the upcoming federal election. There were nine commercial permits issued this past quarter with a value of $1.1 million. The yearly total comes to 24 commercial permits with a value of $6 million. Some of those permits from this past quarter were on the El Dorado Plaza, which was the update for the Beale Store, and updates and renovations to McDonald's, Freddy's, and Walmart. There were six new residential starts in the third quarter, bringing the year's total to 19 so far. Our Develop El Dorado campaign continues, and we are working on a new strategic plan for that going into 2025. It will include not only the industrial recruitment angle, but also a local retention and expansion, and looking at a master plan of the industrial area with a focus on potential virtual renderings for the sites. I've also been meeting with national industrial brokers and capital investors for additional exposure of our industrial sites. There's been great interest in what we have to offer in water, land, and the transportation access. The same sentiment has been shared with me at the different site selector conferences I've been to this year. Excited to share that the CIC sites on the east side of I-35 have received their site certification, which is just over 300 acres. The others are still a work in progress pending environmental updates. I do have a meeting later this week with the Brownfield Program Manager up at KDAG to discuss how we can get our additional sites to the finish line on certification. I do also have new lists from the Kansas Department of Commerce of companies around the world that are showing signs that they're ready to be expanding soon, and we're currently analyzing which companies we will target based on our recruitment criteria, because those spreadsheets come in and they have about 5,000 on each of them, and we have six. So kind of narrow those down. Other things to note, the Modern Income Housing Grant is due next month, as you're aware. I have been talking with the developer and assisting them with some economic development language for their application and a letter of support. I'm hopeful they'll receive the grant. That would be a great addition to downtown El Dorado. And then down, kind of at the bottom, I listed some of the different events and meetings that I attended this past quarter. The Kansas Economic Development Alliance is always a great event where we get to interact with Lieutenant Governor David Tolland. And then at the Greater Wichita Partnership, one of our economic development organization meetings, we got to meet with Deputy Secretary of Commerce Joshua Jefferson. And then the Kansas Economic Outlook Conference was just a couple weeks ago here at Century Two. They always share some interesting data and insights into the economy. And if you're ever interested in attending that, it is every October, and INC. does get some tickets because we're a member of the Wichita Area Outlook Team. So if you're ever interested, let me know. And then lastly, just a note on housing. I worked with WAVA, the Wichita Area Builders Association, to compile a list of different housing developers in our area that may be interested in building in El Dorado to share our housing needs report with them. And then we also have a goal to get together owners of land that would be a good fit for housing and share with them the housing potential for their sites. So again, thank you for your time and continued support of El Dorado Inc., and I'm happy to answer any questions or feel free to reach out whenever.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And I see next on our list is Wendy McPhillips to talk about miniature dairy goats. Thank you, young lady.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Wendy McPhillips. My husband Brian and I have lived in El Dorado for just over three years. My goal this evening is to request that the city of El Dorado consider allowing miniature goats be permitted within the city limits of El Dorado. Why? For food freedom. The term "food freedom" in one sense is in reference to being able to grow and/or raise your own food. Some examples are chickens and ducks being permitted within city limits, as well as keeping honeybees. There is an increasing trend of cities and communities over the last 20 years to allow goats to be raised in an urban environment. Some of these cities include San Francisco, Portland, Oregon, Seattle, Austin, Texas, the Twin Cities, and many others. In the Kansas City area, Shawnee, Independence, Raytown, Liberty, and others. Food freedom stated by one site is the ability to decrease our dependence on a polluted and corrupt corporate food system. I feel that is a good summary. And farm-fresh milk is considered a superfood. For further information, I've included a brief list of resources. There are, of course, small farms that offer farm-fresh milk, such as Baumark Farms Raw Goat Milk, also Born Trigger Farms Raw Cow Milk. Unfortunately, the price is $15 per gallon. $15 per gallon is not affordable for many families. I am asking the city commission to allow families in our community the opportunity to provide this for themselves and their families. Allowing families to have a miniature goat would contribute to self-reliance, self-sufficiency, and help to prepare against times of scarcity, such as empty shelves during COVID. What are some considerations and concerns of keeping goats in an urban environment? Some of these could be fencing, shelter, the size and number of animals allowed, waste management, and noise. Community input is beneficial in planning and optimizing everyone's expectations and goals. Fencing. Fencing is available, that is specifically designed for goats, usually 48 to 52 inches in height, with woven wire and with four-inch squares. This height is adequate in containing and protecting goats. Some sources also recommend chain-length fencing as well. Waste management. Joel Salatin has several instructional resources on how to effectively manage animals in a small space. One of these methods is referred to as deep bedding. He explains, "You need enough mass to support microbes." That is minimally eight inches, but preferably more than 12 inches deep. Also, pine shavings are preferable to straw. Pine shavings absorb waste, compost quickly, and eliminate odors. Straw does not. Using the deep bedding method results in no odor. There should never be an odor with keeping animals. If there is, that is caused by mismanagement of animal waste. Noise. Goats are generally quiet animals. They do make bleeding noises, but it is minimal and less of a nuisance than a barking dog. But goats do need a companion. They need another goat. Goats are herd animals. A solitary goat will cry, it will pine away, and it will die of loneliness. Thus, there is a need to have at least two goats. Space requirements. Miniature goats require a sheltered area of approximately 20 square feet, four-by-five-foot covered area, with 200 feet of living space. A 15-by-15-foot area would be adequate. The shelter is necessary. Goats do not like the rain. Breeds of goats. Some cities only allow particular breeds of goats, such as the Nigerian dwarf dairy goat. I think this is a mistake. There are always new breeds of goats that are being developed. Perhaps a better approach might be size limitations. Some communities have requirements that the animal be less than 100 pounds and under 25 inches in height. Also, keep in mind, all breeds of goats can be milked. The difference is in the quantity of milk produced per day, the quantity of milk produced and amount of butter fat. A miniature Nigerian dwarf dairy goat can give up to two quarts of milk per day with 10% butter fat. Some people use their goat milk for butter and cheesemaking. Another breed of goat is the Miutonic or Tennessee fainting goat. Due to their fainting tendencies, this tiny breed generally does not climb or jump, making them an ideal backyard pet. They are also known for their good milk production. And goat milk has the lowest carbohydrates of all dairy animals. A one cup serving of goat milk has 10.7 grams of carbohydrates. Thus, goat milk is permissible on a keto diet. Cow milk is not. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Let's move on to public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding any matter that is under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon by the mayor. Comments on personal matters, matters pending in court, and land use matters are not permitted. Land use public hearings are held during the planning commission meeting. Are there any public comments? Don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll move on. This takes us to the consent agenda. We have three things in the consent agenda. The city commission work session meetings from October the 2nd, 2024, and city commission meetings from, excuse me, meeting minutes from October the 7th, 2024. The approval of appropriation ordinance number 09-24 in the amount of $2,073,529.14, and approval of the El Dorado Community Partners CMV license to expire at 11:59 p.m. on November the 15th, 2024. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that takes us to old business. I see we have no old business. Is that correct? Let's go to new business. The first one being the approval of the 2025 salary schedule for the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioner, as we discussed during the budget preparation, the staff have included a 6% market adjustment to the salary schedule for 2025. This has been done to continue to assist with recruitment and retention for both our existing employees and hopefully some new employees, and has been applied to all of the minimum and maximums on the salary schedule. Additional changes to the salary schedule that did not have any budgeted or budget effect were the city clerk and executive assistant positions have been combined, which has been happening for a while. It's just official on the schedule now. The management analyst was renamed to management intern. I think we searched for a management analyst, but we're unable to find one, so we changed our minds and went with an intern instead. And then the trojan proportional officer has been reclassified from the police department to engineering. The financial effect of the 6% market increase will have a $479,000 impact on the mill levy funds and a $265,000 impact on other funds. Again, we do this to recruit new employees and retain our existing ones, and those are the only changes we've made. If you have any questions, we can answer those then.
Ready for motion?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the 2025 salary schedule resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to the consideration of approval of the reinvestment housing incentive district, RHID resolution.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, before you tonight is actually the consideration of two resolutions, one being a rural housing incentive district, and the other is a resolution for the intent of issuing IRVs. This will be for a project at 124 South Main by Frontier Development Group. Mitch Walter is here with Gilmore Bell. He can give you details and specifics of what an RHID is about and the reason, the purposes for the intent to issue IRVs. And Tyler Holman is here from Frontier Development as well, the developer of the project. So as you may desire, we can proceed. If you'd like to hear from Mitch first about the resolutions you're considering.
What's your pleasure, the group? I would like to hear it.
You'd like to hear about the project or the legal stuff first?
Oh, everything.
Do you want to discuss the project first?
Commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. My name's Tyler Holloman. I'm with Frontier Development Group. We have been working for a while now with various stakeholders, with David, with Scott, on the project at 124 South Main. And first off, I just wanted to thank you for your willingness to support our application to KHRC for the Modern Income Housing Program. That's a fundamental piece of the capital stack that we need in order to redevelop that iconic building and put that back into productive use for your great downtown district. So I think you're aware of some of our projects. I'm happy just to give you, I didn't prepare a formal presentation, I'm happy just to give you kind of some highlights of what we're planning to do, and then I'll let Mitch speak to the mechanics of the RHID and the sales tax. But high level, we specialize in historic preservation and workforce housing. What that means is we are able to identify buildings with prominent architecture features, buildings that are worth preserving, and we utilize a historic tax credit to do that. And then we also specialize in workforce housing. And so what that means is housing that's not tailored towards low income, because there's some great low-income developers out there, and it's not necessarily housing that's tailored towards the, you know, folks that are buying a three or four, $500,000 home, because there's builders and developers that can do that. We kind of fit in the middle, and the state of Kansas has several programs right now that are available to help subsidize that sort of development. And so in a lot of our projects, it's teachers, it's firefighters, it's, you know, local government employees. It's a pretty wide range of incomes, but it's identified as workforce housing. The project at 124 South Main, we would anticipate being both a state and federal historic tax credit project, which means it would need to meet the state historic preservation guidelines, as well as it would actually be reviewed by folks in Washington, D.C. at the National Park Service, and it would require that us or any future owners maintain the historic integrity of that building. We're anticipating first-floor commercial space, so we would be working with the existing tenant that's on the east side of the building, trying to preserve that space and just modernize it, and then hopefully identifying a restaurant or retail operator for the front space. And then the upper levels, we're working with Gravity Works Architecture out of El Dorado here, which Vince, I think, stepped out, but he was here earlier, working with them to develop plans for between 12 to 13 units of housing, residential housing apartments that would go on those levels. As I mentioned, a big source of funds for this is the application that you all agreed to sponsor to KHRC. If we don't get those funds, the project is not going to be viable. So for some reason, we don't receive those, we would be working with Scott and David and you all to see if you wanted us to try to reapply at a future round. But if we do get those funds, then we would anticipate being able to ramp up our development efforts and start construction sometime next year. The request before you tonight is for, I believe, the intent, not the actual formation of an RHID, but just your expression that you are intending to apply to the Department of Commerce for an RHID district, as well as a sales tax, industrial revenue bonds for sales tax exemption. And again, I'll let Mitch speak to the mechanics of it, but basically what that, it does two things. One, it strengthens our application to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, because they see that there's local support for this project. They see that we're utilizing other funding sources and not just trying to, you know, make it easy and go just to them. But then two, what it does is it helps the affordability of the project. It's not a direct funding source for us, so it's not like, you know, a pot of money that we're pulling from, but it is, it allows us to reduce some of our development costs and our operating costs moving forward. So that was a lot of talking, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have, or I can turn it over to Mitch or Scott.
When you say, what, you said 12 to 13 apartments?
Yes, yep, that's right.
How many is that per floor?
Works out to be about seven on the second floor, and then the third floor and fourth floor have some two-story units. A big part of the space where the old Masonic Hall was has to be preserved, kind of as open space, and so that's why I say it's 12 or 13. Right now, we have 13 planned, and we have plans to subdivide that space, so leave 50% of it open. In the past, National Park Service has allowed that, but they may not allow it on this one. If they don't, we'll lose at least one apartment up there, so that would knock it down to 12.
And I'm assuming that's the stage area?
That's what, sorry.
The stage area on the fourth floor?
Yes, that's right. Yep, that's exactly right. And that's a challenging space, and that's why this building has sat for so long, is that in order to get tax credits, which probably any developer that's going to do something with that is going to need tax credits just because of the size of that building. The challenge is that you have to preserve the volume of the space, which is nice, because once it's done, you're going to be able to go in there and see what it was like, how it was intended, how it was originally constructed, but that's very challenging to make it a residential space. We briefly thought about making it a venue space, and we worked with, actually, we engaged several groups, local groups here. Emily Connell helped us kind of brainstorm that idea, and the challenge with the venue space is that it's not very compatible for residential use. So we basically had to scrap all of the residential use if we were going to go with a venue, and that's ultimately, we are very familiar with housing development, and that's what we specialize in, so we didn't feel like that was a good fit for us.
So approximately, what's the square footage of the apartments?
They would be, they range in size from, I want to say, 700 to 1,000 square feet on average.
How long would a project like this take?
A while. We are looking at, so when we apply to KHRC, it will be this, end of this November. We don't find out about those funds until sometime in March.
Sure. I mean, March comes around and you're ready to go.
So when March comes around, if we receive funding, we would probably have another 90 days to go back to Vince and say, okay, we're ready to spend more money to get this set of concepts into a construction doc set that Scott and his team can view. We'd have to get mechanical and electrical and plumbing engineering. So I say all that because that means we probably are not starting construction until summer at the earliest, probably more likely a fall start date, and then we would anticipate about a 12-month construction timeline. So it'd be placed in service sometime towards the end of 2026.
My understanding is there's water in the basement, almost like a spring or something? Does that provide any special challenges?
Yeah, so what I'm actually most concerned about right now, I drove around the building, walked around it today, and so the brick on the alley side is starting to come off, which we knew that, but there's some new, I don't know if you've seen it, there's some new cracks developing kind of along the parapet wall, which winter is not good for cracks in masonry, so we'll have to really monitor that. We don't own the building now. We don't own the building now, we just have it under contract. The water in the basement is a challenge, but I mean, that's something that we can, what we can mitigate as we get into construction.
What about parking?
Parking is always a challenge in downtown developments. We have done downtown developments in, well, specifically, like true downtowns in Alma, Kansas, and in Manhattan, Kansas. And both of those projects were similar historic tax credit projects that had zero onsite parking, very similar to this building. And we, it's just not a real good solution other than on-street parking. One area that I did identify with this, and I've not had a conversation with David or Scott, is potentially looking at the city parking lot that's, what, just to the east? I think that's being utilized by the post office right now. We had thought about potentially asking the city, hey, could we rent some spots, or could we reserve some spots here? But the reality with parking, every developer in the world hates parking because it's a challenge. But we've not ever really seen it be a problem, because more, you know, people living in the apartments, they're parking there at night, and they're, you know, driving for jobs when the retail spaces and the boutiques and hair salon's, when the customers are coming in. So it kind of works, and the communities we've worked in so far, it has worked out where it's not been a problem. And these would be a mix of one and two bedrooms. So for a lot of these, if it's a single person, you're talking one car.
And when you say workforce, whatever, salary or whatever, what's their rental on, the rates on that?
We haven't identified, we haven't really narrowed down the rates, but the state programs that we're going to be applying for will require that we don't exceed thirty percent of their incomes. So if somebody, if we rent to someone that makes thirty-six thousand dollars a year, that would be, what, right at about a thousand dollars a month that we could charge, no less than, or no more than that. So we can't cost burden someone. The income ranges that we would be able to rent to range from like, I think for a single person, it's around, I think it is around thirty-six thousand up to like ninety-six thousand, so it's a pretty broad range. And truly, in the communities we've worked in, I mean, we have had teachers, we've had principals, we've had local manufacturing workers. It really covers a broad range of folks.
Any other questions?
Thank you guys so much, yep.
Happy to hear about the fun stuff.
No, that wasn't fun stuff. There's always more questions about the actual project and the mechanics, right? Mitch Walter with Gilmore and Bell. We were brought into this process, David had reached out to ask about the possibility of creating an R H I D in the city, supporting the project with issuance of industrial revenue bonds. Discuss R H I D first. Tyler mentioned the word capital stack. Basically, the R H I D is a piece of the capital stack for the project. A few years ago, the R H I D used to be known as the Rural Housing Investment District Act. It got changed to the reinvestment housing in district now because the state legislature wanted to encourage projects just like this one. So what they'll actually allow you to do now as part of the R H I D Act is to pay for vertical construction or private, I say private, I mean, part of the actual building, construction and renovation costs on the second floor and above in these downtown buildings. It used to be generally R H I D was only available for horizontal infrastructure, streets, utilities, things like that. Now you can actually use R H I D to pay for some of the actual construction costs that's allocable to the second floor and above for living space units on these redevelopment projects. So R H I D, what does it do? It freezes the tax base, the tax value associated with that person the year in which the R H I D is created. The increment that follows with the development on that in the R H I D is then used to pay eligible project costs under the R H I D Act, which for this particular project would be the, all the development costs allocable to the second story and above of the building. Given that the proposed parcel is relatively small, it's just going to be the assessed value that's allocable to that parcel. Sometimes you'll see larger R H I Ds to support like a larger housing development be proposed, and they're covering a lot of square footage. This is just for that downtown building. That will be the single R H I D parcel. So it'll just be the value that's associated with that development that would be captured in the increment. The way that the R H I D Act works, it's kind of a two-step process. The first is that the city makes an initial resolution or considers an additional resolution declaring that it has a housing needs and has produced the necessary materials to demonstrate that it has a housing need, sends that up to the Secretary of Commerce for approval to create the R H I D, which is required under the law. I won't use the term rubber stamp, but the state's very supportive of these things. And so they'll be happy to encourage the city to create the R H I D. This is the first resolution that kind of sets that in motion, makes the finding that the city has housing need and makes some of the requisite findings to allow the Secretary of Commerce to give its approval and for the city to come back and actually create the R H I D. So if the city adopts this resolution, we would just bundle this together with a cover letter, send it up to the state, and then the state would consider it and then send back its approval for the city to actually create the R H I D down the road. The creation of the R H I D is a little bit more involved process. There's a few materials that need to be included. Typically, it's the most important one is the cost benefit analysis, where you look at the, you have basically a pro forma, where you look at the project cost and the associated increment and some other information that's included in that development plan, which Gilmore and Bell would help prepare on behalf of the city along with Tyler's group if we get to that point in time. But that's kind of step two, and this is, this is step one. So that's the R H I D side of it. The I R B side, the city has previously issued industrial revenue bonds to support multiple projects in the past. There's typically a tax abatement associated with those I R Bs. In this case, there is no request for a tax abatement because we're looking to use that increment to help support the project costs. So this side of the industrial revenue bond request is for sales tax exemption only, meaning that all the materials that are purchased with the proceeds of those bonds are going to be exempt from state sales tax. So it's just, again, helps the developer group and their capital stack in achieving some project efficiencies. Because there is no tax abatement associated with this industrial revenue bond, there is no public hearing that's necessary since there will be taxes that would be abated from either the city, the school district, or any other taxing jurisdiction in the area. So the city just can approve the issuance or adopt the intent resolution to later issue the industrial revenue bonds via simple resolution. What happens after the consideration of this resolution is that we can produce the sales tax exemption certificate that should the development go forward, the developer can then use to furnish to its vendors and contractors and avoid paying the state sales tax on all the construction materials. Those are the two resolutions that you have before you tonight.
Are there any further questions?
You ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I move to approve a resolution making certain findings and determinations as to the need for housing within the city of Eldorado, Kansas, and setting forth the legal description of real property to be designated as a reinvestment housing incentive district within the city.
Second.
Now, do we need to vote on these separately, or do we vote on them as one?
Separately.
Separately, okay. So is there any further discussion? We have a second and a motion, and therefore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, I move to approve a resolution of the governing body of the city of Eldorado, Kansas, determining the advisability of issuing industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain facilities to be located in the city and authorizing the execution of related documents.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. So it appears that takes care of our new business. So it looks like we're going to discussion items or reports, so you want to start handling?
Of course I will. Nothing on Main Street. I reported last time that we had the state and national visit. Heard nothing since then. I will report for the mayor that the E F A B C meeting did not take place. It's scheduled for next month. That's all I, oh, I do have one comment. I wrote it down. It's called blowing leaves into the street, which is a no-no. On my way to the meeting this afternoon, just on South Denver, there were two separate residences with their blower out blowing their leaves into the city street. This is not good. One, it clogs up the gutters. And then when your street floods, you call us and complain because the water's not going down the storm drain. Well, it's your fault. You blew your leaves in the street, and that's where they ended up. So don't blow your leaves in the street. Secondly, when leaves get wet, they can be dangerous for motorcycles. And we do have motorcycles in town. In fact, in my neighborhood, we have two signs, watch out for motorcycles. So just letting you know, as the leaves fall, rake them, take them to the landfill, rake them, put them in a compost pile of your own making. Just don't put them in the city streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, I have anything.
Okay, cool.
I don't either.
Okay.
But I agree with the leaf thing. Compost is free. Just hire somebody to haul them off if you don't want to do it.
Yeah, there's another option.
There's lots of options. Just don't blow them in the street.
Grandkids, you know, whatever.
Take it back, pause and just, you bet. I don't have anything to report, Sin Manager.
We've got a few, couple things. Halloween's coming up, so everyone's asking about Turkey Tree down Main Street and our construction project. We will still have Turkey Tree down Main Street, and it will be on Main Street. Turkey Tree down Main Street will be from Third Avenue, which is about the Y M C apartment on the left, south to Sunshine Alley, basically in, almost in the middle or in the middle of the one-hour block of North Main. It's from four to six P M on October thirty-first, and then afterwards, kids can go Turkey Tree in their neighborhoods. So that will be happening much as it has in the past.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
With this moving down there, one of the things I mentioned to Emily was the fact that she's, I think she's got it lined up. Main Street's going to have another place to put their goodies, because they couldn't go back and forth. Can we use a, and I guess this is really more for the chief, I suppose, but can we use a, you know, the carts we've used in the past that, I don't know what they call them, to drive around in to be able to do that type of stuff?
Like a gator?
Yeah, gators, yeah.
Yeah, gators are legal in C Street House. You'd have to do that.
No problem, okay, thank you. Sorry, sorry about that.
No, never mind. As you may know, we have a request for proposals out for the Forty Pavilion, which was a project that was approved for funding for excess sales tax funding. We only have one firm put in a proposal, Gravity Works, so we will finalize a negotiated contract with them and get that before you all for approval here very soon. And that's for a pavilion in Good Park relocated. Probably somewhere where we replace the existing pavilion. Or busyboat, yes. Let's see, we also had a commercial real estate trust qualifications out. We had three companies, three forms from which to submit for that. And we are currently negotiating with Landmark Commercial on a contract, and hopefully have that to be very soon for approval as well. And we also have on the street a request for qualifications for consultants for the Aquatic Center. That deadline will be coming up in November, and then we'll work through that process and get that before you as well here, hopefully, the fourth of the year. So a lot of professional services on the street right now for some projects. The Central Avenue project continues to make progress, as you all know, and as the public probably knows. Main and Central is closed, but the contractor's making pretty good headway through the intersection. No timetable yet on when that will be reopened, but they are moving what we would call ahead of schedule on that project. The other big project we have going on is the Cosmo Creek Sanitary Sewer Project. The contractor is getting, let's see, the structures built offsite, and then once those are, where they are staged and ready to rock and roll, they'll be moving those on site and beginning that work very soon. Most of that work will be taking place adjacent to Cosmo Creek, and so the public won't be, most of the public will not be affected right then see the project, as it will not be down a major right away or even, most of them will not be down the street or anything. There will be one neighborhood that will be affected by it, but the rest of the community will hardly even know it's taking place. So we'll provide updates on that as it moves forward. Any questions or thoughts? That's pretty much it.
Okay. Consideration for a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.